Good evening, everybody. It's a beautiful evening in Northborough, Massachusetts, and this is the Northborough Select Board Meeting of the twenty-third of October of two thousand twenty-three. My name is Mitch Cohen, and I chair this fine group, and I will read some introductory remarks. This open meeting of the Northborough Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Chapter Two of the Acts of two thousand twenty-three relative to extending certain COVID-nineteen measures adopted during the state of emergency. All members of the Northborough Select Board are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The Act allows the Northborough Select Board to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda unless the chair notes otherwise. Members of the public who wish to view the live stream or recording of this meeting may do so by going to Northborough Remote Meetings on YouTube via the link on the agenda. Ensuring public access does not ensure public, it does not ensure participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment, and I will also state that this meeting is being recorded if I didn't earlier. And now I will go around the virtual room in the order that everyone is on my screen, and Kristen Wixted, you are first on my screen. Can you hear and be heard?
Yes. Hi, hello, here.
All right, Lisa Mocelli.
Present.
Julianne Hirsch. Julianne, I didn't hear you.
Here.
Ah, there you go. And Laura Ziden.
Here.
Excellent. We also have with us interim Town Administrator Mike Gallagher.
President.
And interim Assistant Town Administrator Diane Whackel.
Present.
And we also have with us Northborough Cable, helping with the technical aspects of this evening's meeting. And first item on our agenda as always is public comment. Is there anyone in our virtual audience that wishes to speak to anything, whether it be on the agenda or not? See no hands. I'll get another few seconds. Going once, going twice. All right, public comment is concluded. Uh, next up, we have approval of meeting minutes. We have the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and then the October sixteenth, two thousand twenty-three. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move the board, Mr. Chairman. I move the board. I'm sorry, I'm having some technical difficulties. I, I move the board vote to approve the September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Laura, seconded by Julianne. Any discussion?
One teeny tiny typo. Is that important?
Everything's important. Let us know what.
Um, on a, on this page six, uh, under my name. Um, Select Board Chair Cohen, you've lost your R. It's Chi Cohen.
Hold on a second. I'm trying to find. This is page six. Describe to me.
In my, under my name.
Lisa Mocelli. Thank the volunteers, asked for update, asked what needs to be done.
Ask for update, read that, read that line.
Asked for updated. Asked what needs to be done to get the voting clickers in place for town meeting as to a previous discussion. It was mentioned that this is probably something.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I have it. I see it. It's a second bullet item. Uh, it should say.
Oh, yes, Chuck.
We'll go, we'll fix that.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I completely missed that, but yes, that's, I don't know whether that's the, the T or the, um, uh, Hebrew word for it represents eighteen, chai life. So it's, you know, could be either one. Um, okay. I, I will assume that that's a, that's a friendly amendment to, uh, to the motion. All right, any other discussion? Okay, um, all those in favor? Laura?
Hi.
Julianne? Lisa?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
I also would I vote as unanimous in favor. Thank you very much, Linda, for preparing the meeting minutes. And do we have a motion on October sixteenth?
Uh-oh, that sounds like it might be me.
Could be.
Right. To read my, my old eyes, I move the board to approve. I move the board to approve the October sixteenth, twenty, twenty-three meeting minutes as presented.
Okay.
Motion made by Lisa, seconded by everybody, but I'll give it to Kristen. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? Lisa?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne? Laura?
Hi.
I also vote I, voters unanimous in favor. Meeting minutes are approved. Thank you again, Linda. All right, uh, next up, we have continuation of ARPA funding request for library health and wellness projects. So folks may remember that on the eighteenth of September, uh, Library Director Jen Bernot was here and made a couple of requests for, um, uh, for some money from ARPA for a couple of different things. One was, uh, some updates and reprinting to a guide, and the other was for some health and wellness initiatives at the library. Um, and we, we put that off a little bit until we learned a little bit more about the building project or the building survey, but, um, I got some comments back that people were, were okay doing this sooner. Uh, Library Director would like conclusion on this. So here we go. Um, uh, any, any comments or questions before we move along? We've got, um, two items. First, first, the seven thousand dollars for the Northborough Community Resources Guides. Let's talk about that one. Lisa?
Um, yes, I've got a, quite a few questions, actually. Um, I'm wondering why, and I have some other different, different people I spoke with during the past week or so. Um, in reference to the artwork and the magnets and the magazine, um, why can't the Algonquin art students be asked to do the graphic or the website work, much like Assabit is used for various things? Uh, first question, she's not here.
I mean, she, yeah, I mean, we, we hadn't asked, you know, the last, when we met with her last time, we said that she wasn't expected to attend the follow-up meeting, so she's not here. Did you have a chance to, to reach out to Jen to ask her any questions? Okay.
Um, and then I have, um, why are we making magnets when stickers would do, uh, less money? And, um, especially because today's, uh, refrigerators are not so sticky anymore with magnets. People who have the stainless steels can't use the magnets. Um, and then, um, maybe the brochure printing should be table for a while and just make it on the website for information that coincides with what the QR code on the sticker has it. Uh, the last time they did the printing of the community guide, it was over twelve thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Um, and I think that anything in paper today gets really out of date very quickly, and that's what happened to the last group of, um, catalogs to which I think she said there were twelve thousand of those. So, um, so that was my thought on the, on the, uh, magnets and the printing. Um, that's how we'll separate them between that and the, um, and the twenty thousand, um.
Yeah, that'll be another, another motion for, uh, for the twenty thousand dollar item.
Because I, I just, I mean.
Lisa, I thought you were concluded.
Yep. And I mean, we just have, as of eight twenty-four, uh, the available budget of the Be Well was twenty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars. The entertainment that uses the, uh, the Ellsworth Field and the bouncy castles in twenty-two was listed as five thousand, one hundred and seventy-five dollars, and in twenty-three, five thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, so it went up seven hundred dollars. So you had said the last time we talked about it, that, that that money was being used for that sort of thing.
There were, there were a few, um, preallocations that used up the remainder of the money. That was one of, I think, three items.
Okay, because when I went down the budget, it was, you know, there was still some money left over, so, um, I just think that that, that money could be better used in all the ways. Okay.
Thanks, Lisa. Comments or questions? Uh, Julianne, you had your hand up, yeah?
So, you know, having read the minutes, the minutes clearly state that we asked Jen if she could postpone this until we got that building report. And I think we were hoping for the building report in October. Now I think it's going to come early November, so I still kind of stand by getting that information before we, before we do allocate money to a project like this, which doesn't seem to be time sensitive. I know we've given money to other things, but that did seem to be a little bit more, um, time to, you know, it had a shorter timeline, so, um, just like in keeping with our rationale from last time, do you think that we could just um, articulate our questions and hope that Jen could answer them and, and wait until our next, our first meeting in November? Hopefully we'll have that report.
So, um, Jen sent an email to the library trustees, or it was in a report, but I, she did say that, um, she does have timelines on both projects that, uh, she, she is, is interested in a decision very soon. I mean, she was interested in, in the answer to that, um, in September. Um, I don't see the need. A difference of seven thousand, you're, you know, seven thousand dollars for this item or twenty thousand for the next out of the two and a half million that we have from ARPA. Um, doesn't really impact what, whatever we get back from the building report, and the building's report's purpose is not to identify urgent needs that can't wait for town meeting. It's for long-term planning and understanding of building systems.
I agree with Julianne. I, I think we need to wait as much as Jen may have a deadline. I certainly got a lot of other questions about the twenty thousand dollar, um.
Yeah, Julianne, I, I apologize. I did reach out to you, and, and I thought you were okay, um, putting this on this agenda.
Well, well, that's because I thought we were going to get that report sometime in October, and we, I've, I've, um, I just heard today that it would come in early November, so.
Mike, is there any, any guidance you could offer on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, through you on the, on the building, um, project that's going on. Uh, we got the first round of data from the folks that are doing all the collection. We reviewed all of that. There were some changes that needed to be made, some updates that needed to be made, so that was due beginning of October. Well, actually, it was not beginning, the end of October, it was actually last week, middle of October, I guess. By last Friday, that information is now back with the vendor. Uh, the vendor needs to make those adjustments, and then once that's done, then they can finish, uh, their piece of this. So we're hoping to have something early, uh, November back from the vendor. So it's, that's, we stand with that. So I, I, you know, I don't know what Jen's requirements are here and what her timelines are, but I, I would have to think that we could probably wait until we have all that data if you really are concerned about the twenty-seven thousand dollars impacting what we want to do with the buildings. Um, otherwise, you know, it, it is, it's like less than one percent of the money that we have there, so. But it's, it's your call. I, I, I don't have a strong feeling either way. I mean, if there are questions about all of that, then I, what I would recommend is that the board members send them to me, and I'll talk to Jen, and we'll try to get them answered prior to your next meeting, if that's the will of the board.
Other members, as to thoughts? Laura?
Oh, I've been, you know, again, thinking about this in more detail, and I, I apologize, I didn't have a chance to speak with Jen in preparation. The only new question that came up for me in how we're reviewing this is, there's a lot of overlap between the library and, you know, family services. And I'm just wondering, like, how is this going to, like, is there going to be a combination of efforts in this, or is this strictly the library? Because I'm, I'm referring more to the second agenda item, and I just don't know if I really understood what that process is going to look like.
So, based on my understanding of the presentation that Jen gave us last month, the, the second item is to understand how her, her staff can be trained to deal with the mental health issues that present themselves now. It's not to make anyone therapists.
Yep.
Um, or anything like that. Um, this is, you know, it's a current issue. Um, you may remember that mental health seemed to be the top priority in at least one of the public info meetings that was held with ARPA, and thus, thus far, nothing has been allocated for that purpose. Um, and there really is an overlap because Family Services does one, I mean, Family Services has zero employees right now. Um, so there can't be overlap with, with a function that does not exist. At some point, that department or that function will get replenished.
Yep.
Um, will probably be in a somewhat different form than it has been in the past. So I, I don't think we can guess as to what there will be. I'm guessing, I'm guessing if there's overlap, it would be good overlap.
Well, I guess, so when I, when we did have that conversation and I was reviewing it again, I felt like we really went off on a tangent for mental health and that becoming the, the linchpin of this. But when I reread through the, um, through the request, it's a more holistic approach, and it isn't specific to mental health. It's going to be based on, you know, feedback from the community, and it just seems like a wellness program. Through, I, I just, I'm trying to understand more of how they're going to work together, and while I know that there is, um, a gap in staffing for, for, for Family Services, I hope that that's not going to, you know, be for the long term, and it does seem like it would be important that there's collaboration between those two efforts, especially because so much of it is devoted to the wellness program. So, oh, that was just the, the, the bigger question that came out as I've been thinking about this more is just understanding how those two would work together. So, I, that, that was, you know, my only follow-up question on that that I had for, for Jen.
Um, looking back to the Community Resource Guide, any other comments or questions? Lisa?
Are we, are we talking just, we're going to separate it? We're still talking at the, the guide itself?
The seven thousand dollars request for the updates and reprinting of the guide with the magnets and other things like that in with it.
All right, then I'll, I'll say I'm still, I'm still reserve of that, and I'll continue to talk on the next.
Yeah, I, I'm concerned about bringing these back over and over and over again, and what that, what that does to staff, um, or relatively small dollar items. My preference is make a decision on it. If the board isn't ready to, the board isn't ready to. Um, you know, if you have an objection, state that. But if, yeah, Kristen?
Um, I'm also fine with moving ahead with, um, well, we're just starting with this first one, so, um, with the, the community guide, I, I understand this point of view where, um, printed things, um, tend to be out of date faster, but last month when Jen was with us, she had a good reason why, um, specifically why she wasn't too worried about that, like why she wasn't doing only an online version. Um, and I can't remember the details because it was a while ago, so that's, that's a big part of why I'm a little, um, I just, I don't want to keep delaying things either. I would just assume, um, go ahead and pay for it. It is a very small amount of the ARPA money. Um, if it was a different budget we're pulling from that was much tighter, fine, but we're getting to a point where we we're almost like sort of stuck in our own, um, footprints in the mud or something. We just can't make a decision. And I think, I mean, we did do, um, the hybrid meeting equipment for Dana, which felt really good, and then we did the town common stuff on the lighting and the, I don't remember what the other thing was, but we, we've, we've paid for some things, and I love the way, um, that feels, and I understand certain perspectives where we want to do things that benefit as many people as possible. I really think anything that might happen at the library. Um, well, there I am, starting to talk about the other, um, item too. So if we're just talking about this guide, um, I think it's a question of, honestly, it just kind of for me is, uh, I just trust Jen. I trust that Jen wouldn't try to spend money frivolously, and I feel like if we're all like, oh, I don't know if we should give you that seven thousand dollars. That's how we're coming across, like, we don't really trust you, and maybe that's not how you feel, but that's how it's coming across. That's how it's coming across to me. And I can't imagine that it's not coming across to her like that, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong, but I just, it's not that much money, and I feel like she wouldn't ask for it if she didn't have, um, you know, a good reason. And I also, Lisa, have worked with high school kids in the arts department, trying to get them to work on their own, like trying to get the, the kids who are in the graphic design class, say, to work on their, even their own musical posters. It's just, sometimes it's a bigger headache than it's worth, and if it's something that you really want to get out because you have a good reason that you want, you know you have residents who need this thing, you don't want to be going to the high school and like recreating some kind of wheel where this isn't a process that's already in place. This would be a new thing, and getting high school kids to do something they don't really feel like doing is miserable. And, um, also, if it's not a program that's already in place, it's just going to be a huge headache to start it because the high school teachers that you would be asking for help with this are just really busy people who already have a million things going on, so. I, I just, I think that's a great idea, and maybe that's something we can implement for another project, but for this, if there is a certain, um, even if it's just like, I would just like to get this done this fall kind of a timeline, it's, that's not a realistic ask.
So Lisa and then Julianne, please.
Well, kind of twisted it around at the end of your statement, but, um, no, I'm, I'm not, I don't have any questions about the fact I don't want to spend the money. Let's be realistic. I don't want to spend seven thousand dollars. We get, it's a, it's a small amount of money. Or, um, that it's a lack of trust. It's got nothing to do with that. It's the fact that we're fiduciary, responsible, uh, people here, that that's our job. And that a hundred thousand dollars was given to the Be Well program that was used in ways I didn't think was overly responsible in some cases. I am not, um, not wondering how to make it sound better. I was trying to be a little bit easier on how we could do it in a way that was compromising, but I don't think just because we've got the money and it's not a lot of money, and it's a, it's a great idea to get it done. I don't agree with all that. I think we don't need to spend the money on that. And I think that we need to realize that, uh, you know, the town is looking to us to make good decisions, and it's not a case of not knowing what we're doing. It's a case of trying to be, uh, kind enough and compromising enough to say that maybe this, maybe we do need some more information as to the, the importance of it. I mean, there was no, I, I didn't see any, I looked in minutes, I didn't see any discussions about it. Um, I didn't see any new information coming, as it was the same packet that we received before. And, uh, you know, I mean, if you would have voted for it right now, you definitely see no for me.
Thanks, Lisa. Julianne?
Okay, so, so two things. One is, um, one is that I think for me, it's, it's not the seven thousand dollars. It's also that, you, you know, we have a long list of requests from ARPA, and I think, um, I'm just concerned that we're, we're taking these projects little by little, and I think very soon at some point, we're going to have to just, you know, look at that whole list and start prioritizing. The other thing is that makes me feel positively about this, this, um, brochure, this pamphlet and the, um, the updating of the website and the magnets is that when we had the meetings overwhelmingly, a lot of people said they, you know, that we have to address mental health, and it's still a concern, and this addresses mental health, so that, that makes me feel, that makes me feel really good about this. So.
Thanks. Um, couple of things following up, probably more on, on Kristen's comments, uh, as well as Lisa's earlier comment. One, the, um, the designer that the library is looking to engage with this is the same designer that did the original book. So it's an up, I forget how, how large that book was, a hundred, hundred and twenty pages, something like that, if I remember right. Um, so that designer is just doing an, doing an update with new content for, for, you know, on maybe half a dozen pages, a dozen pages or so on that. Um, where if you engage somebody new, whether it be high school kids at Algonquin or Assabit or anywhere else, it becomes a new project, and that's a big project. A big book like that is a substantive amount of work, probably not something that you'd be able to do in a couple of class periods. Um, I love the idea of using Algonquin and Assabit, um, for some of the things that the town does. This really isn't, isn't an appropriate project like that. Um, and Lisa, just following up on, um, I did find the email that Jen had sent us um, with what's, uh, the, the remaining allocations from the original hundred thousand dollars of Be Well ARPA. Um, as of August twenty-fourth, the date of her email, there was about twenty-six thousand dollars left. The four items that were listed, um, seven thousand dollars for night out twenty twenty-four. I don't remember off the top of my head what that is, but it's, it's a recurring item. Um, twelve thousand dollars for the Be Well Summer Kickoff twenty twenty-four, four thousand dollars for, um, rec programming, yoga, CPR, et cetera, three thousand dollars for seniors center programming, water aerobics, emotional wellness, et cetera. Um, so those are the budget figures that, um, that add up to the twenty-six thousand dollars. That's as of October twenty-fourth is remaining in ARPA.
Um, Well, thank you. I think twelve thousand is a lot of money for that summer program. I mean, this is tax dollars. It's not free money.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to add a review of that particular program to an agenda, we can do that. Um, I, I, it's been going on the last few years. Um, it's very popular. Uh, it's a, it's a big, big, big hit. Um,
For a small.
I think it's something that the staff, my understanding is the staff wants to use ARPA in twenty twenty-four and then roll it into the budget for future years to keep it going.
And if the town decides to let it stay in the budget.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's ultimately up to town meeting.
But I think, I mean, for the amount of people that it touches out of fifteen thousand.
Have you been there?
Yes.
Yes, hundreds and hundreds of people there.
Hundreds, three hundred people go to the town meeting. So.
Maybe we should, maybe we should have bouncy houses at town meeting.
Oh, that might work.
Yes is go in this bouncy house, no is go over there.
Yes.
We don't need the clickers. We just do that.
What do you think of that, Julianne? No clickers and go to bouncy houses instead? Whoa, I don't know.
So let's, let's roll back to this. Any other comments on, this is again, the Community Resource Guide request for seven thousand dollars? Um, you know, we, we could, my suggestion is we vote now and get it, get it done one way or the other. Um, if the majority of the board prefers waiting to another meeting, we can wait for another meeting, and it may, the, the project may go away. Um, you know, the, the timeline of when the Library Director wants to get this out there may pass. So.
Why is there a timeline on this?
I don't know. She's not here to, to tell us, but, um, I mean, one is the, the original book and, and its associated data is old. Particularly because I remember there was one massive, it was the nine eight eight that got rolled out just after the first print. That's, that's really, I think, the driving force behind justifying, not just updating it, but updating the printed copy.
And replacing the old ones because they were so, yeah, that makes me feel like maybe it is a good idea.
Can you, can you just, you said the nine eight eight?
Yeah. Um, nine eight eight is, it's a mental, a mental health emergency. I am probably the wrong person to describe that in detail. Yeah, nine eight eight, sorry, I'm, I'm seeing Jen's original memo, the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Hotline.
Um, oh, that's what it was.
Yes. Since the first printing in two thousand twenty-two, there have been several changes to critical agency listings, most notably the creation of the nine eight eight Suicide and Crisis Hotline has resulted in the redirection of many local and regional crisis centers. Other groups have restructured, changed names, expanded services, or changed contact information in the last year. So that's from our, uh, September eighteenth packet.
And I remember she said that it went to print, and while it was in print, in the printing process, nine eight eight came out from the, from the federal government.
Yes.
So.
Right, and that's why I think that's a big part of the reason why she didn't feel like, it's not like. It's not like the federal government is going to come out with now a different phone number. As soon as this one comes to print, and that's a really important. Reason. Um, and that won't change, that's gonna stay the same. For the long term, so. Even if it's just that, um. Phone number, having that out there, that's definitely a big. Mental health. Topic, right?
Yeah.
Subject of mental health is making sure people have access to. This phone number, so. I guess. That's a big part of why it's important, I think. We need to be really careful when we vote on something like this, if we don't. Didn't have time to do the research and don't completely understand. What we're voting for. Um, we did ask, we did have a chance to ask Jen a lot of questions last time. Um. This time. I feel like if we haven't. I don't know, it's kind of on us to understand. Pretty well what we're voting for, and I'm saying that, calling myself out because I just couldn't remember that detail, so. Thank you, Julianne and Mitch for reminding me, um, but that's a really important detail, and I think it's a. A good use of money. I don't know. If, you know what, if it saves one person's life because they have access to this phone number that they wouldn't have. I'd say it's worth the money.
Good point.
Other comments or questions, Laura?
I guess, as far as the guide goes, one of the other factors about it that I appreciated was that it'll be available in several other languages. And I think from the perspective of helping the whole community. In that regard, it would be a good resource. That would be interpretable, I, I, your comment about saving one life is not lost on me, Kristen, and from a mental health perspective. If this would help, you know, just. In, 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 in a small way, I can see the, the benefit of that and just making sure that it's. You know, available to, to the people in the community. Um, and I did, I did do my research, I'm sorry if, if something came across indirectly about that, it's just, you know, trying to make sure we're being. Fiscally responsible with our decisions, but this is definitely something that serves the community at large. And it touches, you know, it's something that we've, we are all aware of. That's, yeah, that's my, the end of my comment, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
Wasn't trying to call you out, Laura, I was, it was my own. My own fogginess, really.
All right. Do we wanna vote on this now? Or do we wanna push it off?
Let's just vote, I wanna.
We can vote.
Okay, all right, is there a motion?
There is, Mr. Chairman. I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of seven thousand dollars. For updating and limited reprinting of the Northborough Community Resources Guide. And for expenditure of such sum by the library director pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
Second.
Motion made by Julianne, seconded by Kristen, any other discussion? All those in favor, uh, Julianne?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Lisa?
No.
I vote aye, vote carries, four in favor, one opposed, thank you very much. Um, next up, we have the second uh, library request. This is uh, twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of hiring a consultant to conduct a needs assessment. Research and deliver a three-year strategic plan for the library that focuses on planning and executing a variety of health and wellness initiatives. Um, again, from ARPA, um. Continues from the same meeting, uh, September eighteenth, twenty twenty three, um, comments or questions? Kristen?
So, um. I'm just gonna toss out there the little I know about the Youth Commission and the Family and Youth Services Department. Cause I am their liaison, so I've been closely following what's happening there, and um. As, as Mitch said, it, it's just not. It doesn't have any staff right now, and they will be hiring staff, um, but because we don't have. Um. Anybody in that department to, to guide us, first of all. And second of all, um, because people are coming into. The library, and anyone can use the library. Um, so it is available, this is another way, it covers mental health and it covers. The whole town, and actually probably people from other towns, um, I know I've used other libraries. Um. I feel like it's, um. It's a, it's a slightly um, hard to understand. Um, request because it has to be so general, but basically. She is looking for someone to guide her in. What? The library can offer and how they might offer it. In the umbrella of wellness and mental health for anyone who comes in looking for. Guidance on those things. So it's unfortunate that it has to be so general, but. She. I mean, just for our purposes, discussing it tonight, but I think what Jen is trying to accomplish is. Um. Well, I just remember when I talked to her, and we weren't talking about this particular. Um, request, this hadn't even come up yet, this was before, but. She just said, we have so many people coming into the library for so many reasons, and I am not. A social worker, and I am not a therapist, and I am not qualified to guide my staff in how. To help these people, so what she's looking for is someone whose job that is. Who can. Guide. Jen to guide her staff and also what. What options make sense for a library to offer. Um. And again, it's kind of. It has to be ambiguous because we don't know. What the answers will be, so. Um, I, I think it's. Responsible of her to. Look for help and not just assume that. Oh, I, I, you know, oh, I'll just talk to. Kristen Black and she can help me figure it out, like, that's not Kristen's job either, so I think it's very responsible of her to. It's like she's jumping through an extra hoop to do it right, that's how I see this request, and, you know. It's another, it's sort of like a consultant fee, we pay for those all the time for. Everybody else, and it's a little frustrating sometimes to keep paying them, but I feel like this one is. It's because it's such an ambiguous subject and such a giant umbrella that. I feel like it's the perfect place to have a person who really knows what they're talking about come in and guide. The town staff.
Thanks Kristen, and their comments, questions? Julianne?
So Kristen, I completely agree with you there, and I just would like to drive home that point that. We do not want library staff. To, to, you know, not know how to, um. To help people in crisis or near crisis and go home and worry about them, it's, um, it's a really tough situation. However. Um, in reading the proposal carefully for the consultant. I, I read it as a lot of programming and. Not addressing that specific concern, which is my biggest concern about what the library is experiencing. So. It can somebody point to a part of that proposal that addresses training staff to. You know, how to interact with individuals who come in.
Do you want me to, uh, cause I, I have that packet. Um, up on my screen, do you want me to um, just share my screen, would that be helpful?
Yeah.
Yeah, but if anybody, I mean, did, uh, maybe I'm reading it differently, but.
I'll zoom in on what the consultant would do, uh, let me just get my screen ready, okay. Um. I don't have the shares, oh, should I share screen in big green type? Okay, I assume people can see my screen.
Yeah.
Okay, so why a consultant, this is. Um, what's here, I'll give everyone a moment to just. Read through this in particular, um, the bulleted area, conduct needs assessment, research tools, et cetera. So this is the sort of a good summary of. What's being proposed. Julianne, does that help? Um, answer your question or provide some additional information?
Interpret any of those statements to be that. You, you know, that the, that the staff will learn some. Strategies in helping individuals.
Well, it's a research tools, resources and programs that have proven successful. Identify ways in which the library can create a safe and supportive place, it's, you know, I, I, I don't see. This resulting, as part of this being like a class and how to deal with mental health. But this will identify resources, so, um, it might be a booklet that they can. They, they can read some online training, or it could result in, in follow-up, um, needs for. For some additional classes or coursework or something like that from library staff. This will, this will identify what is needed.
And then would. If. If they, okay, so if this is the first step, identifying. What is needed and ways in which the li- library can best support. Other departments with regard to health and wellness or. Strategies for centering ideas of health and wellness in the library, if any of those things require. More funding. Ie, training staff in particular, or whatever. Um. She has the option of either coming back for more ARPA money. Or putting it in her regular.
Right, yeah, she has a, you know. She provides regular training to staff on, on a variety of topics. So this might simply roll, become a priority for the budget, or she may come back and request more. Or it might be, there might be grant funding available for some specific things that she might see, she's. Been very successful in receiving grants for other programs, so it wouldn't surprise me. If that's in her mind.
Okay. I, I just feel like this is the first. Step, but it would really. Give a lot of. Information. That she just isn't trained to get any other way. And it is. What the ARPA money is supposed to be for, one of, one of the thing.
Is everyone done reading?
No, can you keep, can you keep that up, so?
Absolutely.
So. What you're saying is the bullet point, identify ways in which the library can create a safe and supportive space for patrons. That, that. That's kind of a general term for. The, um, the issue that they face frequently enough of. Individuals coming in with their own specific problems and how. How to best. Guide them through it, I mean.
Yeah. That's how I read that, Julianne, that's exactly how I read that.
And, and you think that's Jen's intent there? Because she did mention that, um, that space in the. Literal sense that there were, you know, that they, that they have identified that. They kind of need some private spaces for people who are looking up things that they don't want somebody looking over their shoulder.
Oh, right, yeah.
So that's how I read that one, but.
Well, it could probably be read both ways, right? I mean, I think a lot of these things can mean more than one thing.
So if we, it, let's just say for, for, you know, hypothetical, we approve this tonight, can somebody clarify with Jen that? That is one of our concerns, that we hope that the staff will get some tools. To, to help. Individual people when they come in.
Oh, I'm cer- I'm certain that will be part of this.
A, a need, what?
I, yeah, I'm certain that will be part of this, that, that at the, at the conclusion of this, that the staff will be better equipped. To handle these health and wellness needs that are presented to them by patrons coming in. There will also be, I'm, I strongly suspect identified additional things. That might be worth doing later. That this won't, this won't solve the mental health problem, but it will. Um. It will probably solve certain issues. And provide. Guidance as to how to solve other issues.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
That makes sense.
Yeah, but I, I, I definitely believe that there will be actionable information. In this that will provide. Short-term and, you know, immediate benefit, not just here a list of other things to buy.
Yes. You know, I do feel like I see why Jul- Julian is a- asking these questions, and I'm just assuming I'm right, Julianne, and correct me if I'm wrong, but. We have been a little disappointed with some of the money, um, that we've spent on certain. Other, um, advice from quote-unquote experts and been, you know. Oh, it was lackluster and not actionable, so I, I think it's good to ask these questions.
So to that point, um. Is, do you think Jen would be agreeable to give us some follow-ups on? You know, the consultant she hired, the background and. Kind of then a report at the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, my suspicion is she would certainly do that for the library trustees. And obviously, um, you know, she could certainly copy us on that information, I wouldn't expect her to. Come back to the board. With, you know, with a follow-up presentation unless there were follow-up requests. But, um, but this is certainly something that I, I am very confident, as a member of the library trustees, I'm confident to say that the library trustees would be very interested. In the output, in learning about the output of this.
Yeah, and she could just CC us, um.
Yeah.
Not, or you could just share it with us.
Yeah. Absolutely.
Mm-hmm.
Similar to the, you know, the sort of summary that she did at the end of the, uh, the Be Well process, which wasn't, you know. She was just one of several department heads involved in Be Well, but she took the responsibility to issue that summary.
If I may, I have one more thing that I'd like to. Emphasize, and that's the point that Laura brought up, that, um. We really need to figure out what's going on with Family and Youth Service Department. Because that is also very critical. And going back to what people can, you know, were asking for at the ARPA meetings, we have to. Um, if there's any way that we can help move that along quickly, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that an ask to Mike, to, um. I know that's a big open issue among a lot of other big open issues. That he's dealing with right now. Um. But, yeah, I, I think we're all. Very interested and, and care a great deal about the, the purpose of that department. And what the future might be for that.
Hmm, particularly in these times, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, this is, it's, it's a really tough time to, um, to lose the staff that we lost. Um, it, obviously it provides the opportunity to rethink, you know, are, are we using the best method for delivery? Um, but we can't take too much time to rethink that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um. You mind if I stop sharing the screen?
Yeah, okay.
Only, only because my screen looks different, um, and people are in different places on my screen, and the buttons are different, okay. If anybody does wanna see it again, it's fine. Uh. All right. Okay, any other questions or comment on this item? Lisa?
Wanna go first, Laura?
Want to go first, Laura? No, you can.
All right, I have a quite a few concerns of this. It's not not seven thousand, it's twenty thousand. It's another. Consultant that we spend money for. It's another. Question of giving a direction from a consultant that maybe would be able to be done in some of our own research. Um, the Youth and Family Services hasn't been operating at a full staff for years, and it's currently not operating at all. And wouldn't it make more sense to hire a director, a community outreach coordinator, and this position's job description can include what the consultant would do once. And a full time social worker, and maybe a a sign on bonus um, for their first responders. The outreach coordinator could have office hours at the library, or even the police and fire department, or the senior center. I think that um, I think that we're forgetting that Youth and Family Services is the one who's supposed to be really conducting this. And then it's a great idea to have another resource, being the library. And I think that, again, putting office hours in for those directors or whatever at the library would be a great idea. But we constantly want to spend money on consultants. And I don't feel that it's well spent in this case, and I think that. Uh, if this was a burning need, then that should have come out of the be well money of a hundred thousand dollars, and I think that could have been done. Had there been a discussion about that, but it don't seem to see any minutes that talked about discussions on the concern. And I'm not confident that we should be spending that money for another consultant. So. That's my take on that.
Thanks, Lisa. Laura, did you have your hand up?
I did. I'm just coming back. I'm really struggling with the delineation of work between the two departments. And how, you know, I I I hope we can backfill those positions quickly. And help, you know, that that is a big need for the community that everybody uses. Um. And I just trying to imagine, it's going to put a lot of responsibility on the library, and while I recognize. How critical the work is that they're doing and the fact that they're being exposed to these situations in our community. It's it's a, it's just, it's it's hard work, and I recognize that. And I just, I'm so uncertain if. If this is going to be the right solution to help them, to help the community, because it is um. It's it's just, it's vague in the request. I don't know if that's exactly that we're, I mean, do we need to frame it in such a way that the librarians will be educated? And how to respond to people in crisis? Does that need to be a line item in there? Or are we gonna? You know, what I don't want to happen is where people are being confronted in these really, you know. Sorry, what were you gonna say?
I was gonna say, I mean, it it talks about. Um, you know, library staff, so I. You know, I I read that as, you know, maybe not necessarily every member of library staff, but library staff would be there. And and yeah, with. Again, this isn't a training program that we're budgeting here. This is. Overall, this is a first look.
Mm hmm.
How to help the library staff deal with library patrons with health and wellness issues. They may identify. The need for training. It might identify books or videos, conferences, um, other ways of doing that, and you know. I certainly expect that some of this would be. Um, identified right away and and would be able to be presented as part of this or just directed from this. Kristen. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I just wanted to make sure Laura was done before I talk. It's it, you're done.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
All right, so I think, like, like I said, um. I am very, very concerned with. Family and Youth Services, and I really would love to have them back in the picture, but. The reality is people are going to show up at the library with these puzzling requests. Whether we have a good family and youth services. Department or whether our department's in transition, um, or whether. We. Um, you know, like now, just don't have anybody in that department, like people just show up, um. I think in a perfect world, it would be great if our new family and youth services. Um, department head. Were able to answer all these questions and take this over, but that's also not a guarantee, even if we do hire somebody, they might. Not be. Exactly well equipped to handle how a library can help a town with these types of issues. It sounded to me when Jen was here before that she had. A specific type of specialist. In mind, not like a social worker who could sort of take over for. Sort of um, maybe. Some of the things June was doing, but. Somebody who is more of a specialist in in um. In this kind of thing, I don't know, it's. It, I mean, the bottom line is this, these people are coming to the library, whether. Whether we would like to structure it a different way or not, they're just showing up, so. Yeah.
Yeah, the. I, Family Youth Services needs, or you know, that department absolutely positively needs to get replenished in some way as soon as possible. This is a different issue, the. I would not expect that department to perform this function because they're not, they would not be library experts and experts on. The way that. Library staff can provide this type of services, just like, you know, we're, the senior center has mental health training. And they absolutely should. And that's does, that's not duplicative of what the family and youth services department does, even when they're staffed. The school department. Has mental health training and mental health professionals on staff. That is not duplicative of what family services does when fully staffed. Each of them has specific needs, and this is another specific need. That is not being met at all. And. The library director would like to. Enterway forward to meeting that need. Julianne?
Oh, I did a quick search of um. Our other libraries having to offer these kinds of facing facing new problems like this, and it does seem to me that. Many, many libraries throughout the country are are offering these, you know, are facing. Problems that and questions that are not your standard, you know, where's the mystery section? It's um. So. I I I think that it's just a reality today, um. But. I I I I'm curious about what you said, Mitch, is that there's there's delineation between all of these services. I was kind of hoping that information gleaned from the consultant might. Might help us. Um, in the recruitment of of family and youth service that, you know, just in terms of. The 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 needs in the community.
I mean, it's possible. Um, I am gonna guess. That they will go on parallel tracks, so I don't know if they will. Both resolve in a time that the output of this could help with the input for what type of person to hire. Um. But I certainly imagine that the output of this work. Will probably. Suggest benefits of involving the family and youth services department within the library to a greater extent than it had been in the past. I think Jen brought up the idea of, you know, maybe the social worker that works for that department. Has. His or her offices in the library or office hours in the library. As just another location to go in and meet with that person. Now, that person wouldn't be there and available for patrons. You know, every hour of the library being open, it might be, you know. Three hours, two days a week, something like that, because they would have a lot of other work to do. But that's. You know, if I were to guess, that could be one possible output. Um. Yeah, but I, my, and honestly, my hope is is that is that Mike or whoever the town administrator turns out to be, um. Moves forward with the the necessary structuring and hiring of this department. Um, sooner rather than wait for the output of the study.
Well, we might get some information because Mr. Gallagher has his hand up.
Oh, I missed that, Mike.
This is Chairman through you, with all due respect, the family and youth services department is probably at the bottom of the list of things that I'm concerned about right now as far as recruiting is concerned. Um, if you think about some of the larger holes that we have in the organization right now, I think that's probably. One of the least. Um, we really need to concentrate on, we've got a budget process we need to go through, we don't have a finance director, we don't have a town accountant. The police chief is retiring. I'm an interim, I'm only doing this part time. You have an interim sitting in the the assistant town administrator seat. I think we have much larger fish to fry in that respect. Um, but as far as this particular request is concerned, I think what. What I'm understanding and leaning from all of this is that she wants somebody to come in and help her try to understand. What those things should look like, and is this really something, I think we we may even find out it's not something that they should be doing, that should be just pointing. People in another direction. I don't know, I think at this point, she doesn't know what she doesn't know. And is very concerned about what's transpiring around her, and this needs somebody to help her. Figure all of that out uh, to to go forward. Uh, you know, we can't be experts in all fields within each of our disciplines, so I think that's where her concern is.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, anybody else? Okay, are we ready to to move forward and take a vote on this tonight? I see one nod. Another nod, okay, that's enough to vote. All right, is there a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I move the board vote to approve the use of ARPA funds in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of hiring a consultant. To conduct a needs assessment, research, and deliver a three year strategic plan for the library that focuses on planning and executing a variety of health and wellness initiatives. And for expenditure of such sum by the library director pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty four, Section fifty three A.
Second.
Hey, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Laura. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Kristen?
I.
Laura?
I.
Julianne? Lisa?
No.
I also vote I, vote uh, the the proposal passes, four in favor, one opposed. Thank you very much. All right. Um, moving right along, discussion, police uh, chief recruitment. I do see our police, currently as chief. In the lobby, however, I. Don't have admin privileges on this meeting to bring him in. Um. Owen, if you are listening, if you could either, oh, I'm a co host now, look at that.
Magic.
Yes, um, Mike, I assume I should bring the chief in.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think that would be appropriate at this time.
Chief, if you could unmute and turn on your video. You're still muted.
There we go.
Hello, welcome.
Thank you.
So you're retiring?
Yes, I am.
Boo.
We're we're sad and happy at the same time. Same here. All right, all right, so um, so.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Ending your retirement, my understanding at the end, end of the calendar year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mike, what what do we do?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you very much. I I appreciate the opportunity to speak to the the board this evening, so. With your chief retiring the end of December, um, the board is the appointing authority and has the option to do a number of different. Uh, take a number of different tasks through this whole whole process. One of them would be to do, you know, throw out that uh. Wide net. Do a nationwide search. Go through the whole process, do an assessment center, blah blah, there's a whole number of things that you could do. Um, that would take. A significant amount of time to go through through from recruiting process to a screening process, et cetera. Um. Or the 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 alternative is if you have someone in house. Who has been groomed uh, for that particular role. And is uh, ready for that position, uh, you can certainly. Promote from within and. You know, bypass all of the rest of the the process, particularly where this is a non. Union position, it's a non civil service position, there are, there are a lot of, there's a lot more latitude that the board has. That you wouldn't have otherwise. So uh, my recommendation, and based on conversations that I've had with the chief. Uh, would be to look internally, and I believe that we have a candidate uh. Internal to the department that is. Uh, from whatever, for everything I've heard and discussions I've had with certain people, the person is ready for this particular role and to take this next step, and. Uh, the chief was kind enough to write a memo uh, to me explaining all of that and kind of giving me some background on. Uh, the individual in his department who is uh, who he feels is uh. Next up, if you will. And I'm just gonna leave it at that and open it up for discussion about what it is the. Will of the board would be to actually follow the process. I. Have my own. Um, opinions on the matter, uh, but I think I will, I will leave that to all of us to have a discussion about. Thank you.
Well, I'm I'm always interested in your opinions, Mike, but why don't we go around the room and uh, see if uh, board members have any questions or thoughts? Kristen? Uh-oh, muted for a second time.
Shoot, um, are we, uh, at what point do we listen to Chief Liver talk about? His memo? Or do we talk first? And I'm not sure why we would talk.
We could go around and, you know, if we have comments or questions, and I'd be more than happy to turn it over to the chief for for his input into the process.
Yeah, I just, I just want to hear.
Okay, does anyone want to speak up before I? Ask the chief? Laura?
I, thank you, Mr. Chair. I I really love that Chief Livers put so much thought into succession planning. And how much he's devoted to the community, and congratulations, Chief Liver. I also. I really love the idea of promoting from within. It really, I mean, I couldn't think of a better person for that position. Um, so my preference would be to to dive in as quickly as possible. To make for a nice smooth transition for staff. I know that the the folks on the uh, that are police officers now, I've heard a lot of people comment about. This this migration uh, transition and how, I mean, the the person has a lot of support and love in the community, both, you know, from his colleagues and I think from the community at large. So that would be my preference. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, I don't see any other hands up, so, oh, sorry, Julianne.
Um, so, so obviously, you know, we all wrote memo and. Chief Liver gave us very strong recommendation. Are we allowed to say the person's name? No one's saying his name. Are we?
I thought, I thought Chief Lager was gonna sort of announce it. I don't know.
Mike, any any guidance on this?
Yeah, I think, I think, uh, perhaps Mr. Chairman, the the chief and I can do a kind of a. Tag team here, if you will. Um, so I'm I'm gonna let that the chief have this, have his moments here, but. Um, I can tell you that I personally back uh. What the chief put in his memo, I think, um, I think. It served the town well, so I'm gonna put my two cents in the matter uh, out there on the table, so everybody has it, so. I think maybe we need to hear from the chief and just get his thoughts on this.
This is an opportune time. Chief? What's on your mind? Do we, do we have somebody?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yes, clearly, my memo, uh. As I state, uh, I want to advance Lieutenant Brian Griffin. To be my successor. He's a good man. He's a dedicated loyal department employee. He grew up in Northborough. His parents still live in Northborough. His wife's a school teacher in Northborough. And you're just not gonna find a better person. Uh, he has held every position in the department but one. Cause there's only one chief. Uh, and uh, I I could be, I'm, I. Am extremely pleased to be able to self tell you that uh, he would be a. A great person for the department. There are times. As I mentioned in my memo born of necessity, when going outside is a good thing, it can bring change. Uh, and uh, breathe new life into organizations. Uh, that was a case back when I was very young on the department, forty four years ago. Uh, when we brought a chief in from Colorado. Uh, and then. Uh, we brought in Chief Leahy from Connecticut. Uh, and then uh we brought in Chief Leahy from Connecticut. And uh. I would be remiss in saying that there was a certain element. Within the department that felt like we're always being told no one here is good enough. And uh. I was blessed. To be chosen to be chief. Uh, it it doesn't sound like a lot, but in the history of the department. Which was founded by the board at town meeting in eighteen seventy-four, I'm the fifth, I'm the fifth police chief. Uh, so. And the first in over sixty years to be appointed from within, something I'm very proud of. It's something I'd like to see continue. If I felt. That Brian was not. A good leader. And did not have what it took to lead this department into the future, I would not have sent the memo. I stand by it. And it's a, it's a pleasure for me to recommend that. Thank you.
And thank you, Chief. I'm seeing a lot of nods around the uh the virtual room here. Uh, any other comments or questions, Lisa?
I am, I'm very happy to um to read the memo. And I too uh concur with Laura and probably most of the room uh that this is a wonderful. Appointment to make that uh that this, this young man has been been here for a long time and worked his way up, and he is a perfect example of. What it's like to put that kind of time and energy in to get the recognition he deserves. And it works hand in glove with the town, I think, in giving them. A wonderful opportunity to have a, as you call it, a son of Northborough. Um, he, I spoke with him at the parade and a few other times and uh. I have to say that I think by putting uh an appointment from within and and this individual in particular. Uh, that it should bring some uh hometown pride. It should bring some comfort to the. People that do put the time and energy in, knowing that at some point. They will be able to move forward and they will be able to take a position that they have earned. And I really feel that this is something that uh I can stand behind a hundred percent and. And I'm glad that we're talking about it and I hope that we can do something about it tonight and make it, make it all happen. And thank you, Chief.
Kristen?
Um, so, yeah, I I I feel like this is one um time where I'm really glad I spent. A certain amount of time. Um, getting to know Chief Liver and through him getting to know. Some other um. Members of the police force, including Lieutenant Griffin and um always had really good interactions with him, but. I was also very um surprised, pleasantly surprised to find out that. He just is a really good person um. As well as all the other. Credit he deserves. So you really, that's such a huge win for Northborough. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, concur completely with my fellow board members that have spoken thus far. I think. Brian is is perfect for this role. I was, I was hoping we would find a way to get here and. Chief, thank you very much for providing the opportunity for us to um to really truly have this discussion. You know, tonight we are not, we don't have on the agenda and we have not gone through certain processes we likely have to go through to. To officially do this. Um, I and I think. You know, I I look for guidance from from Mike and Chief Lever, but you know, maybe we. By consensus, agree that we advertise internally only. For this position, provide Lieutenant Griffin the opportunity to. Write us a letter as to, you know, I want, I want to hear from him as to um, does he think that he's ready for this job? I'm sure he is. But to to get something in his own words and maybe as a way of of, you know, cross-checking, have somebody else. Sort of take a look and confirm third party that, yeah, he's, you know, met whatever the qualifications are and maybe provide. Some suggestions as to additional training or certifications. I, you know, I don't, I've never been through the process of hiring a police chief before. You know, what are, what are some of the other things that we might want to put in on the assumption that we name him, but you know. Provide some guidance for for additional things to do. Just my own thought. Uh, Mike, were you gonna speak and then I'll recognize this.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, I I think that uh it's appropriate, we we just, you know, ad advertise internally. Let uh. Let Lieutenant actually apply for the position um formally. And then uh we can move forward. I would respectfully request, though, that the board, when they decide to actually. Do that appointment, that that be an in-person meeting so that the chief, uh the incoming chief has an opportunity to. Actually meet the board personally and have an opportunity for his family uh to attend as opposed to doing something virtually. Uh, it is a very big deal. Uh, and I think it's appropriate that. Uh, we make it that and and make it such. So um I I would respectfully request that the board. Follow that.
Makes a lot of sense. Lisa?
Totally agree with that. I think that in person would be perfect. Um, I'd like to know if we could put uh, move it quickly. I'd like to have a timeline of sorts. I don't want to see it go to December sometime. And then so close to when the chief is going to retire, I think everybody's ready to uh. Move forward in some of the decisions that we make. And I'd like to make sure that this is a. A very quick process.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, through you, we can get that started tomorrow, as early as tomorrow and make this happen. Quickly so that we're doing something first part of November, um even if we have a special. Meeting of the board for this one item. Uh, I think that would be appropriate also.
Chief, you had your hand up?
You know, I was simply going to echo what Mike had just basically said, but for another reason in that it's budget season. And it would really be nice for Brian to be able to submit his first budget for the next fiscal year. Uh, because I mean, my thoughts and ideas are gonna be long gone, uh and it's, it's gonna be Brian's wheelhouse, so. That's, again, I would ask before the end of the fiscal year and before the budgets are actually due. That uh something happens so that it can be his budget submitted, cause he'll be doing the presentations.
Excellent, Julianne?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that it goes without saying that we're gonna miss you. Um, Chief. Um, but I I have a a quick question because I think it's a. I think it's important now that we're going through the whole town administrator search, how. Disruptive that can be that, you know, to maintain the stability of a department is really important. And I was just curious. Uh, what uh you, you might not know this offhand, but like, wh- what percent of your staff do you think is? Or your percent of your department is. Like ten or five years just in into their careers?
At least a third of the department. Um, is under five years.
Wow, okay, so.
Every very young department.
Uh-huh. So, so I would think my impression would be that having someone from within who has been working with the. You know, a young staff. Is is a major factor.
Yes, and I I I can tell you that uh Brian is well respected, as I put my memo uh. Top to bottom across the organization. Um, and his leadership skills are wonderful, and I think uh. Guiding all these younger offices forward uh for uh is just right up his alley.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. Okay, so it sounds like we have, we have consensus to uh to ask Mike to do on our behalf an internal search only. Um, and then uh come back to us as soon as possible. With the conclusion of that search and to set up a, an in-person meeting for an interview on the um, on the hopeful assumption. That Brian applies for the position.
Right.
Okay. Chief, anything else?
No, I'm just very happy that the. The consensus is what it is. I leave on a good note.
Right, you're not done yet.
I know.
But it'll be a good note. All right. And uh and and we will, we will have the opportunity to uh to thank you more formally in a little while.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, anybody else on this agenda, and before we close this one out?
Okay, I just want to thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh through you to the board, thank you to your uh consideration here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh kicking the chief back to the attendee section here. Um, next up on our agenda is appoint Planning Board member Millie Milton to serve. As delegate member on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Um, I'll summarize that. That uh Carrie Martinick was the uh, when we set up the screening committee, we gave the planning board direction to. Go ahead and appoint one of their own to that Town Administrator Screening Committee. Carrie Martinick was that member. Um, as everybody knows, we're we're in round two of that process. Uh, Carrie will be uh doing some, some work travel next month when we anticipate uh having meetings um. For selecting uh candidates to bring forward to the select board. Um, so she went ahead and took the initiative to um at a planning board meeting to seek who would be available and interested in and Millie. Raised her hand and is available, and I've confirmed with her that she's available to take that role. So this is a formality. To uh officially designate Millie as the Planning Board's representative on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. Um, unless there's any questions, I'll take a motion.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion.
Sure.
I'd like to move the board to appoint Planning Board member Millie Milton. To serve as the Planning Board's delegate member on the Town Administrator's Screening Committee.
Okay, motion being made by Lisa, seconded by Kristen. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Lisa? Kristen?
Hi.
Julianne? Laura?
I.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Um, thank you very, very much, Millie, for uh for volunteering for this. Important role. Um, very briefly, I'll provide uh an informal update on the this screening process since we're on a. A related item. Um. Uh, I expect that a week from tonight, the Town Administrator Screening Committee will have its first meeting of round two. Where we will receive uh and discuss. Uh, a number of applicants that have come into MRI. I have not seen any names or anything yet. They, their MRI is responsible for the first round of the process. They've uh informed the screening committee that they have thirteen. Applications um that they consider worthy and people who have uh supplied responses to essay questions that we put together. Um, a little bit earlier. Um, so at that meeting next Monday, we will select. Um, which candidates rise to the top enough for the screening committee to do pre-screening interviews with them. And then following that, and that, that I think would be um in another couple of weeks. And then following that process, uh we'll hopefully name some number. To be considered finalists to move forward to the select board for interviews, tentatively scheduled for. I think the week prior to Thanksgiving is the uh. Cross your fingers, hope that we can uh get that all done on time. But so far, the process has been moving well. Um, and just while we're here, any, any questions about that process? Okay, um, all right, moving right along. We've got um two items related to an exec, relating to an executive session item for SA Farm. Um, so we can't really say that much about it other than um, this is. Um, for taking additional um additional action on a particular item. Um, so I'll entertain a motion to appoint Attorney Mark Lanza as special counsel.
Second.
Um, sorry, I didn't read the whole motion, but someone like to read the whole motion.
Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to appoint Attorney Mark Lanza as special counsel in connection with the matters relative. To SA Farm at properties known and numbered as four twenty-nine and four thirty-two Whitney Street.
Okay, motion made. Yeah, Mike.
But if I could just add one more piece to that, uh. And that the the board. Um, vote to allow me to to sign the agreement um with Attorney Lanza. I can get that done tomorrow if you do that.
Sure, everyone good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I I always read that as implied that if we provide something, you have the authority to act, but. I appreciate the clarification, can't hurt. Okay, any other discussion? All right, I know we have motion and second. I don't, we didn't, did we vote yet?
No.
I lost track, might confuse me. Um, Laura, how do you vote?
I.
Julianne?
I.
Kristen?
Hi.
Lisa?
I.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor and a related item. Um, Kristen, do you have a motion on the related item?
As a matter of fact, I do.
Excellent.
I move the board vote to grant special municipal employee status to Attorney Mark Lanza. As special counsel for the town for matters relative to SA Farm.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Kristen, seconded by Julianne. Any other discussion? All those in favor, Kristen?
I.
Julianne?
I.
Lisa?
I.
Laura?
I.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. Next up, we have reports. Uh, let's see, Lisa, any reports tonight?
You know, I don't have any reports tonight. I may have, but I don't have any more in my mind.
It's only been a week, so that's all right. Uh, Laura, any reports tonight?
No reports this week.
Julianne, any reports?
Thank you.
Uh, just a a quick one. Uh, I attended the Master Plan Implementation Committee meeting that was held last, just this past Thursday. And we are continuing to work on the final reports from um Weston and Sampson, so hopefully. There will be a final report soon on the downtown revitalization plan.
Excellent, look forward to that. Thank you, Julianne. Yeah, do you have anything else?
No, that's it, thank you.
Okay, Kristen, any reports tonight?
I don't have an official report, but I'm on the. Town Hall feasibility study committee, and just so everyone knows, our meeting was supposed to happen. Last week or. And a little while ago, got rescheduled for the twenty-fifth, so it's. This week on Wednesday.
Okay. Okay, thanks, Kristen. I guess I've got the largest report of uh of the night then, even though I don't, only have three items. Um, one is a reminder to the community that the trunker, annual trunk or treat event at the Senior Center is tomorrow. Uh, October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, from four thirty P M to six thirty P M, again, at the Senior Center. A number, a number of local uh community organizations will be there with their uh, their cars and trucks and trunks open. Giving away uh candy and other fun things to kids, so um I hope to, I I will certainly be there and um. I hope to see a lot of kids and maybe some adults dressed up nicely. Um, the Fire Station Building Committee held our first. Um, public input session last Tuesday night at the library. Um, it's the first of of at least three public input sessions that we plan to have. Um, in addition to that, um, the architects will be at our meeting on November sixth. Um, for the opportunity to uh to present the status of the project to the select board. Um, design will not be um. Be that far along, cause it's only just beginning. This is more an opportunity to meet the architects involved in this important project. And ask questions and provide input from the board, as well as an opportunity for those that can't, for whatever reason, attend in person. A public input meetings um to provide input, um, you know, over our our Zoom function on the sixth of November. Uh, the next in-person regular public input meeting for the project is tentatively scheduled for Wednesday, November fifteenth, seven P M. At the library. I say tentatively because we're just waiting to confirm that the library is available and so forth. We've got a regular meeting. Um, pretty soon to uh to finalize that schedule. And the very last item is, since this is our last meeting before one of my favorite holidays, Happy Halloween. To uh the entire Northborough community. Have, have fun, be safe, and um uh don't forget to not be too scary. Um. And that concludes my report. Uh, next up, we have town administrator report. Mike, anything for us tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, I have one item I wanted to just discuss with the board this evening. Uh, as you know, Jason Little's last day is November fifth. Um, he starts November sixth in his new role. Uh, I have spoken with uh an individual who is interested in becoming the interim uh. Finance Director, who would work uh part-time. Retired uh person who is in Shrewsbury. Um, I'm actually in the process of working a contract. Uh, with her, um, and I'll have that. More formal at some point. I just want to get this written and and inked. Um, also, Jason Little has offered to uh enter into a consulting agreement with the town. So that if we do need uh any assistance from him, uh he would be available to us. So I'm working on both of those contracts. Unless the select board has any concerns about any of that. Uh, I would like to get that in place uh sooner rather than later. Uh, I finalized the dollar amounts with everybody. Today, um, both the same, it's the same. Uh, per hour rate for both of them, that's. I think fairly reasonable for what we're gonna get. I think fairly reasonable for what we're going to get for services and to be able to plug that. Very large hole as we move forward through the whole budget planning process in the next couple of weeks. And Jason and I are actually going to spend the next week or so, we can have. Focusing primarily on the budget and trying to get all the budget document pieces together so that I at least understand what it is I'm looking at. As we craft the budget for fiscal year twenty five. That's my report for the evening.
Great. The appointment of the interim. Finance director slash town accountant, as I think we talked about it at our last meeting, that, that single person position is, is split in terms of two appointment processes. The town administrator appoints the finance director, the select board appoints the town accountant. I really hope that the board doesn't stand in the way of this, but the, the date happens to be convenient that our next select board meeting is the sixth of November, the first day for, for the interim. So, you know, we should have. That, whatever that process looks like on our agenda to sort of make that a hundred percent official. If anyone wants to do anything different, I encourage you to contact Mike long before then.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, through you, that's why the contract is going to read interim finance director, not interim finance director slash town accountant.
Okay.
That way, that way we can, I can get this done and have the person in place before Jason walks.
Okay.
Really do want the overlap for at least a couple of days. So that's why, that's how that contract will read.
Yeah, but we should probably, we, we have to have somebody that's a town accountant. And you, you and I can talk about the, the mechanics of that offline.
Yes, we can.
Yes, okay, sounds good. Lisa, you have your hand up.
Yes, so I, and I'm just reiterating information. We are definitely going to have two separate. Positions. We're going to have town accountant and we're going to have. The director, correct?
Mr. Chairman, through you, we can't do that until after town meeting. So town meeting has to vote to actually split that role, if you will.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to, Lisa, are you talking about splitting it into two different human beings? Or are you talking about the fact that one, one human being does two jobs?
No, I want two human beings to do two different jobs.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what Mike was answering to, that, that requires time meeting authorization to do that.
So would we also have an interim town accountant? Before town meeting? If somebody were to step up and say they would be willing to do that. From in-house.
My anticipation would be the same person that's.
Yeah, I, I, as far as function is concerned. We can deal with the function. It's, it's the person that we need in the, in the seat right now.
Right, but I, I may know of someone in, in-house who might be interested in the other position.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I, I would, I would appreciate it if that person in-house would step up and talk to me as the. Town administrator to take that forward to the board.
Any other comments or questions? And Mike, you said that was the only item you had under your report?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's it.
Okay, great. Diane, anything for us tonight, reports?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any other business to come before the board not previously anticipated? Okay, I don't see anything. The last item as always is public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to make a comment? For us before we conclude this evening? See anyone going once? Going twice, public comment is closed. I'm not sure if we've ever had a regular agenda meeting without any public comment at all. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Julian, seconded by Kristen to adjourn. All those in favor, Julian?
Hi.
Kristen?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Lisa?
Hi.
I also vote I, vote is unanimous in favor. We are adjourned eight thirty-five PM. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a wonderful night.